I'd like to call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, February 9. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Richard, Commissioner Van Buren is here, Commissioner Pell.
Here.
Commissioner Anton, Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Fidesco.
Here.
And Commissioner Fleet.
Here.
We have a full outline.
Would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. While I have you standing before you are seated, I need everyone who is going to give testimony tonight either for, against, or as a witness to please be sworn in. Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I swear to tell the truth.
I swear to tell the truth.
The whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
The whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Please be seated. May I ask everyone to please silence any cell phones and pager and electronic devices, please? First order of business tonight is the approval of the minutes of the January 12, 2011 meeting. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, at least one error for the voting on motion A. Fleet is not here.
Okay, we will change that on the first vote. And then also on the back page on PZ 11-002, the, under the commissioner's comment on the second paragraph, that should read Pell, Thomas, and Richards. We have a motion, and that needs to be amended then to reflect those two changes. Do we need to have another motion, or is that just, can we just approve this as amended, correct? Just approve as amended.
I would move to approve as amended. Second.
Alrighty, great. Any further discussion on the minutes?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Pell?
Yes. Sorry. Thank you. Alrighty. Under new business, planning and zoning item 11-003, Pedro and Angela Rodriguez with Scott, if I'm pronouncing this correct, Cirque's, Cirque's Design LLC regarding the property located at 213 South Grand Street in Westmont for the following: A, a zoning code variance request to permit the construction of an addition which will encroach into the required front yard setback; and B, a zoning code variance request to permit lot coverage greater than the 35% maximum allowed in the R3 single-family detached residence district.
My name is Scott Cirque's. Pete and Angela Rodriguez are also in attendance, and would like to present the case for the variances, front yard setback as you've mentioned, and lot coverage.
The... Yes, excuse me, I'm sorry. Anyone who comes up to the podium, would you please sign in also? Thank you.
The project they're undertaking is a, is a pretty heavy remodel and a small addition to their existing home that they've lived in, I believe, 10 years. They purchased it 10 years ago and live there. They have two young children that are growing fast. The current house, originally built in 1920s, obviously small rooms, different things like that. They currently reside in a converted attic as their master. So what they'd like to undertake with the project is a, is a second floor addition to the existing house, a true second floor, and a small addition on the rear of the house. The variances come into play on the front yard setback. Currently, the house has an enclosed front porch, probably 60% of the front of the house. What they want to do is take that front porch and redo it so that it's a open, open-air front porch across the entire facade of the house. They do not plan on encroaching into the front yard setback any further than their existing porch lies right now. They are obviously going to extend it for the remainder of that 40% of the, the coverage of the facade, but not encroaching towards the street at any further than it currently is. The other variance is a request for lot coverage. The current lot coverage due to a couple existing situations as far as a, it's a rather deep lot, and it has a detached garage all the way in the rear of the lot. They have a long driveway that leads to that, and, which takes up a lot of the lot coverage currently. They're not planning on doing anything beyond the 10 by 15 addition on the rear, so they're not really doing anything over the top as far as expanding and using up that lot coverage. But the current lot coverage right now sits at 37%. They are removing a sidewalk that currently lies on the south of the home, so it leads from a rear basement entry on the original portion of the home all the way up to the front sidewalk. They don't use that, it's not needed, so they're removing that and replacing it with grass. So that, with that removal, and the addition of the addition, they're going from a 37 to a 36, actually, lot coverage. But then they would like to have a future, the option of doing a future patio in the future, just a paver-type patio that isn't in the budget right now, isn't in the project, but they don't, they don't want to have to come for another variance to, to provide that in the future. So, all said and done, addition, future patio would bring them up to that 39%, which is what we're asking for as variance for the lot coverage.
Great. Thank you. Any comments from staff?
The commission will recall that just recently the village board did amend the lot coverage requirements for single-family districts. Up until a couple of months ago, the lot coverage requirement was 40%, and this petition would have then fallen into our regulations and met the code had this project been conceived before that change took place recently. With the new code in place, the coverage is over 4%, which equates to about 360 square feet. So this is the first petition to come forward to request a variance from the new code provision. So obviously, it's a difficult situation to determine if there is a true hardship and whether or not this would be setting a precedent for other property owners. But there are some unique factors that the petitioner did mention in terms of the driveway length. There is a detached garage that does not have access off of the alley, so...
Anything further? Great. Is there anyone in the audience who would comment either for or against this? I'll close the public hearing on this, and we'll start with the commissioners, beginning with Commissioner Fleet.
On the garage, did I understand that there's no acc, there's, there's not a second garage door?
I don't believe so, the petitioner.
Is there?
There is. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I misspoke.
So there is access to the alleyway?
There is.
To the garage?
Um, yes, I think, I think there is a front and rear, so a double garage, or a pass-through, basically, garage.
Okay. And also to understand that you want to go at the 39% to include the patio which would be built in the future.
Exactly.
And without the patio, and taking out the sidewalk, with the new, new structure on the house, new restructuring of the house, you would come to 36%?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just let that stand for right now, talk more, see what my other friends have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Fidesco.
I have a question regarding your lot as well as your neighbors' lots. How many people up and down the street, either side of you, have, have driveways that come off of the street versus just the access from the alley?
Everybody?
Almost everybody. So you're not a unique situation where previous owner placed a driveway in for convenience sake off the front of the property?
The access from the alley is actually more inconvenient because the turns are pretty, the driveways, or the garage sits right off the alley. All we have is about a, I don't know, a four-foot concrete slab.
And it looks like the, to the property line, it's 5.3 feet. So it's, it's probably difficult to get in and out of that garage.
Like, right now, we, the rear door, it's also without, we don't use the driveway, it's, it's, so our main entrance and e rest is...
Okay.
I thi, I think some of those other houses, though, you can correct me if I'm wrong, have that same driveway, but I think some of it is gravel, a lot of them are gravel-type driveways.
I know the driveway that is set midway, so they've got a plot in the back of the alley plus the side, so it's easier to...
Okay. Because your garage is set so far back, you have a difficulty using the rear door to the alley. Okay. That, basically, those are my questions as far as the house goes. I don't have any issues with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Buren?
Yes. Commissioner Fleet and Commissioner Fidesco have covered my concerns. I have no problem at all with this project.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
I have no problems with it at all. I like the plan, I like the way it looks. I love porches. Thank you.
Thanks. In looking down the street, it appears that with the front addition, it's basically since you're going to stay in line with what you have, there are others that are right in line with that. That seems to have been probably a common building point.
Mm-hmm. Actually...
This one. So it's really going to keep the character of the neighborhood intact, I believe.
Yeah. I think actually, technically, when you go down to the street just to the south, the cross street to the south, and kind of shooting a visual line, theirs, their, as it sits currently, is actually a couple feet back still from, there's, there's other houses that encroach further on that. So we didn't want to lose that street presence by, I guess, abiding by that new, or that 30-foot setback. I think it would have lost some of that strong street presence. That's why we wanted to maintain where it was now, just add a little bit more character, like I said, with the front porch, open front porch, too.
Great. Thank you. I, I like the whole plan. I think it's a, it's going to really add to the house. It's going to give you a lot more room, which is obviously what you're after, and it's also going to improve the property as a whole, which is great for you guys and great for the village. I think it's a nice idea, and well drawn out. Good job.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Alright, since we have two variances here, we also need to have findings of fact read. We'll take the first one, please.
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the circumstances, under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The applicant is proposing to replace an existing covered front porch with a new open front porch which spans the width of the house. The proposed front porch will not encroach any further into the front yard setback compared with the existing front porch. Replacement of this porch would be impossible without this variance.
All those in favor, please raise your hands. We are unanimous?
Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The applicant's home was built around 1922 with a front yard setback that complied with the regulations then in effect. The 35-foot front yard setback was required by the village after construction of this home, thereby requiring a variance for any replacement of this front porch.
All those in favor, please raise your hands. We are unanimous?
Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The proposed front porch will be an aesthetically pleasing addition to this home and will improve the appearance and quality of the existing front porch. The proposed porch will be similar in quality and setback to other front porches in the immediate vicinity and will not alter the essential character of the area.
All those in favor, please raise your hands. We are once again unanimous. So I will entertain a motion for PZ item 11-003A, a zoning code variance request to permit the construction of an addition which will encroach into the required front yard setback.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Any comments or questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Pell?
Yes. We have an additional finding of fact?
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The applicant is proposing a modest front porch and rear addition to the existing home in order to make the existing two-bedroom, one-bathroom house more functional for the applicant's family. The existing house does not meet the functional or size needs of today's family and could not be reasonably expanded without this variance.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous?
Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The property contains a 100-foot driveway which extends to the detached garage in the rear of the house. The size of this variance would be significantly reduced were it not for this extended driveway which impacts the property's lot coverage.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous?
Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The proposed size and aesthetics of this home, as improved, will be consistent with the size and aesthetics of homes in the surrounding area and will pose no adverse impacts on surrounding properties.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous once again. I will entertain a motion for item B, zoning code variance request to permit lot coverage greater than the 35% maximum allowed in the R3 single-family detached residence district.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Fleet. Any discussion or questions? Unbeing heard, please take the roll.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
And Chairman Pell?
Yes.
Alright, thank you very much. You have our recommendation, which will be passed on to the village board, and Shan will coordinate with you at which time you will go before the village board committee of the whole on a Thursday night. Thanks and best of luck.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning item 11-004, Keith A. Nyman of SureSite Consulting Group LLC with T-Mobile Central LLC, and Rick Branstadter regarding the property located at 1 East Oak Hill Drive in Westmont for the following: A, a zoning code variance request to permit more than three antennas on a structure. Please sign in whoever is, there we go. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. On behalf of T-Mobile, I am requesting a variance for a three-sector antenna array totaling six antennas, which exceeds the limit by three on the, what's known as the Napleton Building. We're going to use the upper tier, proposing to use the upper-tier rooftop with three sled mounts, two antennas per sector, with the antennas and associated equipment to be located on the rooftop also.
Are there any comments from staff?
Just a couple of quick comments. The Forest Preserve District of DuPage County did present a letter neither for or against the proposal. They didn't have any comments, so that was passed out before the meeting this evening for your records. Also, I believe that this is a virgin site. There are no other antennas on the location, so this would represent the first cellular sighting here. At this point in time, the six antennas are probably going to be negligibly noticeable at that location, but other users may wish to co-locate there in the future. So just to kind of have in the back of everyone's mind, as people seek to co-locate at this location, additional screening may become a necessity.
Yes, please.
Can you briefly explain the hardship for this request? The zoning ordinance restricts no more than three antennas on any one site. Can you just explain why the six antennas, as opposed to three, are necessary to provide coverage technologies?
Typically, T-Mobile's putting 12 antennas, a four-sector, three- or four-sector antennas with 12 antennas. I work for all the major carriers in the metro of this area and the Midwest, and three antennas, if it's not put into a stealth inside of a canister which limits it, are, at a minimum, some Clearwire Cricket would do three, but pretty much every other carrier is at least six antennas. So the capacity, the download, the streaming, the technology you see every day if you watch TV or listen to the radio, it all requires more capacity. So there, we didn't even request the 12 antennas.
Any other comments, Shannon?
No, thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who would speak either for or against this item? Close the public hearing, and we'll start with Commissioner Thomas.
Starting last month, we, we had antennas on top of buildings as opposed to on towers, water towers and that, and I like that a lot, that they're out of sight and that, and that's what I like about this, too. I don't have a problem with it. Thank you.
Commissioner Van Buren?
I don't either. As this technology expands, this is going to, this continues to be an ongoing request and one that is expected and is even expected to be amended, so I don't have any problem with it.
Thank you. Commissioner Fidesco?
I don't have any, any real questions other than one. What's the overall height above the, the roof line of the antennas?
Currently, there's some chillers up there, so they won't exceed that, I believe...
Won't exceed the...
No, they will not exceed that. They're, they're going to be on what we call sleds, and there's...
I know what sleds are.
Okay. So they're, they're closer to the rooftop, 59-inch antennas, they're going to be pipe-mounted, so roughly at the top, upper-tier roof that we're going on, I would say less than seven feet.
Okay. I just wanted to get that out there, that these aren't really tall structures.
No.
Okay. That, that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Fleet?
No questions.
Great. And I have no questions either. Alright, since we have a variance, we once again have findings of fact.
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The applicant will face a hardship in expanding its cellular network coverage and implementing technology upgrades without the ability to add more than three antennas at this location. The ordinance's restriction to three antennas would not allow the applicant to implement its technology at any location in the village as a minimum of six panel antennas are required for appropriate service and coverage. The applicant seeks to take advantage of utilizing an existing office structure at a lower cost to applicant rather than burdening the village and the public with installing a new cellular tower structure.
You agree with these findings of fact? Please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement.
Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The applicant could not expand anywhere within the village without a variance given the ordinance's limitation to no more than three antennas on a structure.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous.
Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Due to the proposed location of these antennas on an existing office building which contains a significant setback, these proposed antennas will not be particularly noticeable to the public and will not alter the essential character of the area.
If you agree with these findings of fact, please raise your hand. We are unanimous once again. Alright, thank you. Alright, I will entertain a motion for planning and zoning item 11-004, a zoning code variance request to permit more than three antennas on a structure.
So move.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion by Commissioner Van Buren and seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Any comments or discussion on the item? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
And Chairman Pell?
Yes. Thank you. You have our recommendation, and Shannon will coordinate with you when you will appear before the Village of Westmont's Committee of the Whole for the trustee vote.
Thank you.
Good luck. Planning and zoning item 11-005, Mike Daubenmeyer of Fortune Wireless with AT&amp;T regarding the property located at 328 South Wilmett Avenue for the following: A, a zoning code variance request to permit more than three antennas on a structure.
Michael Gasra with Fortune Wireless, on behalf of AT&amp;T Mobility. We are proposing to increase the number of antennas that we currently have on the village water tank. We have, we currently have six antennas. We propose to remove those antennas, upgrade them with new antennas, and add an additional three antennas, so we would have a total of nine at the end. So, again, we're, we're currently on the water tank. We have, the height of the antennas do not extend above the water tank, they are at a lower height than, than the actual tank, or tank top. And we did do a, complete a structural analysis with an Illinois engineer, and just to confirm that the additional weight, and it's not surprising, the water tanks hold quite a bit of weight, so, just to make sure that we, we had that completed, so...
Great. I did see that report. Can you just tell us a little bit about how this, the hardship comes into play here, please?
Yeah, with the increase of the, the volume of high-speed technology, we would be required to add the additional three antennas. They're long-term elevation, el, huh, long-term evolution antennas. These are your, you know, your iPad, your iPhone with, with streaming video and that sort of thing, so, and the other six, replacement is to upgrade those and make them dual-banded antennas. So we couldn't remove the, you know, remove antennas and just replace, we would have to keep the current technology with the 2G and 3G, and then upgrade to the, to the 4G technology.
Great. Thank you. Anything further? Or...
I do concur with the gentleman who said that many locations are going to, you know, up to 12 antennas, so I, I would have to agree with that.
Thank you. Any comments by staff?
This is actually the third iteration of license agreement with this carrier at our location at the village water tower, and the first one was originated in 2001, where the village board granted approval of up to 10 antennas. That was amended in 2003, when the carrier reduced it from 10 to 6, and now, in order to meet the need and the capacity, they are asking to go back up to nine again.
Thank you, Shannon. Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on this, either for or against? Close the public hearing, and we'll continue with commissioner comments, starting with Commissioner Fleet.
The installation of the new antennas, we're going to have to run more, more wires up?
More coax, yes. I believe we're running six additional coax up there.
Right now, what we have coax on three legs?
For different carriers?
And then one time, when, last time we talked about this, we talked about painting, color. Color...
If I can interrupt, yes, we certainly did, and part of the agreement with this carrier, back when it was originally drafted 10 years ago, was that the equipment color and the lines do need to be painted to match the color of the water tower. So that's a part of, of their agreement with the village.
And, and just to clarify, the, the replacement antennas, they'll be getting the coax, the new, the LTE antennas, they'll be getting fiber optics, so a little bit smaller.
Okay. No further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Fidesco?
Well, since you mentioned fiber optics, you're going to run one sheath up and then split? In other words, have, have different buffer tubes in there for the different antennas?
You're getting too technical for me. You're getting too technical for me. I'm a planner.
In other words, most likely, there's only going to be one additional line going up to those, those three new antennas, if they're on the, the same face.
Yeah, with something they call a squid.
Yeah, okay. So, so in other words, there won't be three separate lines going down, because since it is fiber optics, you can fit a lot more in a much smaller package.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
And then, do you know about the type of paint? I mean, I'll ask staff. They're required to use, because this is polyurethane jacketing?
The license agreement doesn't specify a type of paint.
Well, you know, standard paint that we would paint a water tower with is metal paint, you know, and these, this particular type of cabling, it's, it's made of plastic. It's going to need to have a special type of paint, for that paint to adhere to that plastic. If you use metal paint, paint designed for metal or wood or some other type of surface, it's not going to adhere. It will peel off.
Right.
So I, I, you know, that's something for our staff to, to note, that we need to make sure that they're using paint that will adhere to that surface.
And for the record, the carrier will have to maintain that paint, so if it does wear, regardless of what type is used-
With UV, I mean, it will affect that paint, and that paint will eventually just harden and peel off, if we use the standard-type paint, so I just wanted to make that-
Yeah, and even if we use the best paint, it's still going to need maintenance, so they're, they're, and that is, she's right, that is part of the-
You will maintain it.
Oh, yes, yes.
It's not just paint it once and forget it.
No, you can't just go away and-
All right. I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Buren? Commissioner Thomas?
No questions.
And I have no questions, just a comment, well, maybe it is a question. I noticed in, in reviewing the engineer's report, there's no problem with the additional antennas, as far as the weight and stuff is concerned, correct?
Yes, you're correct. And, and, and again, the, these water tanks, when you add a few hundred, few thousand pounds, it really, it, it has no bearing on them, for the most part, but we still, especially, you know, if it's a village water tank, I think it's a, a very good thing to do every time you add equipment up there.
Great. Thank you for providing that also. All right, since we have a variance, we also have findings of fact.
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. AT&amp;T's predecessor previously had 10 antennas on this site, which number was subsequently reduced to six antennas. The applicant now desires to add three additional antennas on this water tower site. The applicant will face a hardship in expanding its cellular network coverage and implementing technology upgrades without the ability to add additional antennas at this location. Without this variance, the applicant would be forced to seek placement of its new antennas' technology on a new structure at a considerably greater expense to the applicant. The applicant seeks to take advantage of using an existing structure at a lower cost to the applicant, rather than burdening the village and the public with installing a new cellular tower structure.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous.
Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The applicant is hoping to take advantage of using an existing structure at a lower cost to the applicant, rather than burden the village and the public with installing a new cellular tower structure.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous.
Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The applicant plans to utilize an existing cellular antenna structure. The addition of three antennas to the pre-existing 21 antennas will not adversely impact surrounding properties.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous. I will entertain a motion for planning and zoning item 11-005, A, a zoning code variance request to permit more than three antennas on a structure.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fidesco, seconded by Commissioner Fleet. Any comments or discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Pill?
Yes.
Thank you. You have our recommendation, and Shannon will coordinate with you, at which time you will be scheduled to go before the Village Board Committee of the Whole to represent and have the village vote on it.
Thank you for your time.
Continuing, planning and zoning item 11-004. Mark Link of Uncle Bubs Barbecue and Catering with Robert Sanoa, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, regarding the property located at 132 South Cass Avenue, for the following. A, a zoning code variance request to permit an electronic message board sign in the B1 Limited Business District. B, zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs. And C, a zoning code variance request to increase the maximum gross square footage of signage.
Mr. Chairman, point of clarification, I believe the correct notation item is PZ 11-006.
Did I say five?
You said four.
I am sorry, thank you, Fred. PZ 11-006, my mistake. Mr. Link?
Good evening, board and staff members. Uncle Bubs has been a successful business within the Village of Westmont for 13 years now. Over the past few years, we have experienced some hardships with the declining economy. As we look into the year 2011, in efforts to help increase our revenue, we would like to enhance our marquee to an electronic message board. Statistics show that an electronic message board could increase business up to 10%. It is to our understanding that under our current location, Zone B1, we are not eligible to make this enhancement without the proper permits. This is why we're requesting a special variance permit. We pride ourselves on maintaining the exterior, exterior as well as the interior of our property. Yearly, we seal coat, we stripe our lot, put down fresh mulch, we paint trim. Last year, we painted the whole exterior of the building. This is important to us, because we always want our property to look fresh and clean, due to the fact that we're the first business entering into the downtown area from the south. Our marquee has been extremely labor-intensive. On an average, we change the marquee three times weekly, both front and back, which is often not enough considering we offer daily specials. We average roughly four labor hours weekly, which is approximately $2,000 annually. Unfortunately, regardless of weather, our sign must be changed, with more times than not makes our employees have to be out in severe conditions. Graffiti has been an issue, considering, considering our letters are easily rearranged to spell out explicit words and sayings. We've had numerous issues where we have had to correct offensive language that was intentionally plagiarized, which, which in turn is negative to both Uncle Bubs and the community. The electronic message board would have a black background with red lettering and be the same dimensions as our current marquee. Our sign would not contain any sort of flashing, animation, illusion, or similar display. We will have no graphics whatsoever, and it will only have alpha numeric characters. All of our messages will change instantaneously with no transitions, and will not change more than once every 30 seconds. Uncle Bubs will meet the maximum light, light intensity regulation of Article 11, and would be on dimmer control, which would be adjusted to meet all village light emission standards. Our electronic message board would be respectful in that, in not to alter the character of the neighborhood in any way, and we strongly feel that this will not adversely impact our neighbors. It is extremely important to us to pertain to our, our customer and the community. We would not request something that we do not feel fit character of the restaurant and our surrounding community. As far as the signs go on the building, the three signs were already fixtures to the existing building when we signed our lease 14 years ago. The only thing we did was replace the faces of the signs using our logo. We did not take that, we did take down the south-side fixture, but use the exact same-sized faceplate of which was there and replaced it with our new logo in 2002, when we built our addition. In January, when I applied for the special variance permit, that was the first time it was brought to my attention that we had too much signage. I, I did attach an 18-inch tall by 12-inch wide Facebook and Twitter sign to our current marquee. I did not apply for a permit, because it was to an existing sign. We have always been focused on the community and giving back to the community, which is why we would like to allocate 20% of the electronic message board to promote the community and the community's local events, if granted permission. We are asking for the board's support in this manner.
Thank you, Mark. Staff, comments, please?
This is a, a difficult situation, because this represents the first time that someone's come forward since we created the ordinance in 2007 that governs electronic message boards, and that ordinance specifically called out that they should not be permitted in the B1 Limited Business District. There are two matters before the commission this evening, and the reason for that is because the variance to allow the electronic message board, but then any change to existing signs, staff goes in and essentially audits the signage that's there and determines whether or not it complies with code. So when that occurred, we determined that there was more signage than what code permits. A generous interpretation would be three signs for the property, and I believe that there are six. So that being said, I'd like to read into the record some of the information that was presented in the staff report for this evening, also to the Economic Development Committee when they met to discuss the matter on January 6. While staff respectfully understands the plight of the business owner and the effort to gain additional visibility, there are significant concerns with the proposal to install an electronic message board sign at Uncle Bubs due to its location within the B1 Limited Business District. You may recall that the village board took proactive steps to address this type of signage in 2007, with the creation of the electronic message board ordinance, ordinance 07-161. The adoption of this ordinance followed extensive research into the technology and application of electronic signage, and concluded that it is not appropriate in the B1 Limited Business District, Downtown Central Business District. Over the years, much discussion has taken place with regard to the character of the area. Design guidelines were created and provide staff with guidance when working with property owners and new businesses. Many downtown businesses have applied for grant funding to make improvements which are generally awarded with the aim of maintaining the mid-century aesthetic in downtown Westmont. Additionally, there is no doubt that the community character discussion will be ongoing as we continue through the comprehensive planning process in the months to come. The request by Uncle Bubs to install an electronic message board represents the first by a business in the B1 district since the ordinance's inception. The ordinance recognizes that there are some appropriate applications of the new technology in districts other than B1, such as B2, OR, and C1. Staff is extremely concerned with the precedent that will be set by approving any electronic message board downtown. In addition, this particular site is adjacent to residential properties, which could be adversely affected. In order to protect the character of the B1 Limited Business District, the residential use of adjacent properties, and the integrity of the 2007 electronic message board ordinance, staff is making a very strong recommendation that the variance pertaining to the installation of an electronic message board at this location not be granted. That is all I have, unless there are questions, or if Fred has further comment.
Is there anyone in the audience, from the public, who would like to either speak for or against this? Please come forward.
I'd like to speak, but I wasn't here at the beginning.
Okay.
Can I still be sworn?
Absolutely. Please raise your right hand. I swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Sworn.
Please sign in.
Hi, my name is Justin Shide, and I live right in the downtown area. I'm rising in support of the electronic sign. I do understand the limitations with the prior ordinance, however, at the same time, I understand the current economic climate and the condition, the general condition of the downtown area. Uncle Bubs has given back to the community in a number of ways. It's been an institution in Westmont from long before I was here, and I think that we need to do the best that we can, given the current economic climate, to not only keep our businesses in Westmont in business, but also continue to have them in Westmont. There's a lot of incentives that other communities are, are giving to their businesses to relocate, and I'm sure that Uncle Bubs is no different. So I think that the Planning and Zoning Committee and also the Village Board need to give serious consideration to this electronic sign ordinance. At the same time, I do understand the concerns with the overall aesthetics of the downtown area. However, I do believe that, given the location of Uncle Bubs to the general downtown area, which is typically viewed as north of the tracks, I don't see a great impact by an electronic sign. So I, I just rise in support of the electronic sign. I think it's something that should be seriously considered, and I think that the board should, both the Planning and Zoning Board and the Village Boards should consider economic incentives and, and provide opportunities to work with these businesses to keep them in business and keep them in Westmont. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello. Not quite as eloquent as that, and I would have to have notes. I don't have notes.
I'm sorry, your name, sir?
My name is John Veriga. I run the Eclectic Ville across the street from Uncle Bubs. And what's good for Uncle Bubs is absolutely good for me. I, I don't see where it's, really would be a problem as far as encroaching into the residential area unless, unless he had live music out there. That's the only reason I, I would think that there would be a problem with any of Mark has done a fantastic job in the community, and I, I, I'm amazed at his get-up-and-go when it comes to donating things and, and being a good citizen. I realize that's not written into the ordinance, but times as they are, I could, I could almost see a little slack being cut on, on his behalf. And I really miss the beard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public have comments? I will close the public hearing, and we will begin with, I forgot which side I started on, Commissioner Thomas.
When, when staff looked over the amount of signage and that, and said that they, you had too many, has there been any negotiation between you and staff about, in order to bring the signage into legal standard?
I, I want to, I want to be part of the village, so if, if that's the case, I'd be more than happy to do that. Have we discussed it? No. Has it been brought up? Yes, to my attention, but nothing said, no one said, well, they did say, Shannon did say that we would have to, if granted this, we would have to remove some signage. Clearly, the signage was existing with, with the exception of the Facebook and Twitter that I did put up without permission. We, the three signs that are up there were existing from the smaller part of the building, so I thought there was no issue there. I, I, I think if I took down the north side of the sign, even the front, even the east-side sign facing the Cass, I don't think people would really recognize it missing, or notice that it's missing, so I am willing to do that, yes.
Because I, I was thinking, if, if you could bring those within legality and, and get the electronic sign, you know, it's-
I'd be more than happy to do that.
It's a win-win, and as far as us setting precedent, this being the first challenge to the ordinance and that, since we do a case-by-case, every request is, is, stands on its own merit. I don't see where we set precedent, and as in the other spokesman saying that this is pretty far south of the downtown property, I don't, I don't see the impact that it has on, on neighbors or residents and that, and I'm in favor of it, if something can be done by bringing the other signs into legality, you know, and that, so, that's all I have.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Yeah, we are really not in a position on this board to be negotiators, but Mr. Thomas's point is a good one. I, I know that you have been a, a great asset to our- I know that you have been a great asset to our community, and I also feel that while a lot of people in your business are suffering, you're probably suffering a little less.
Well, you know, what's a little bit different about Uncle Bubbs is it's a lot of protein, and we're seeing the impact with the price of pork going up, price of beef going up. I wish I had more pasta on the menu, so our food cost is kind of high. We are trying to control that, obviously, but I think we feel it, we're feeling a little bit more because of the rising costs. I'm trying to be fair to our customers as well, keep our prices very competitive.
You've been a good neighbor, you've been a good citizen to our community, and I know you're also involved in the chamber. And if it can be worked out with the staff and with the village to negotiate down some of the other signage, I would have no problem.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fidesco.
I'm in agreement with the previous two commissioners, but I do have a question regarding the signage, the newest sign. As far as the lighting of the sign, when would it be lit? I mean, obviously, it can be lit during business hours, but in the nighttime hours, how long past the time the business is closed would you want to have this thing lit? Or would you put it dark?
I could do that.
At closing time?
That can be done. In fact, I made that phone call a couple days ago to verify if that was a request by the board. I could shut it down at night at a certain time.
Well, or maybe leave it to, I don't know when your lights go off, I mean, a half-hour past the business closing.
Usually, we try to, we keep mine until 3:00 in the morning, just to keep the parking lot lit. The police ask that we do that, so. But I could shut it down earlier if that would.
Because I think that that would be the one thing that might affect the neighborhood. You know, people wouldn't want to see a sign on at 3:00 in the morning.
I don't think there's that much traffic at that time anyways, but so I would be more than happy to do that, and it can be done, yes, to answer your question.
And the purpose is to notify your customers, your current customers, your specials, and potential customers, hey, this is what's going on, you know, come on in, try our goods, you know? So I wouldn't really be against it, and especially since it is in a unique situation of where it's located in the downtown district. It is either the first or the last property, depending on which direction you're going in town. I mean, there's really only two ends of town, you know, actually, three, I mean, you know, the business district along the tracks, but generally speaking, up and down Cass Avenue, it's either your business or at the other end at Naperville Road, you know, where potentially a sign like this might be acceptable.
Sure.
Any other part of downtown, I think it might not be acceptable. So, that being said.
To your point, in the sign code, it does require any illumination of signs that they be turned off within 30 minutes after the close of business. If you require a slightly longer time, that can be discussed by ordinance with the board.
Yeah, well, I'm not asking for any extension. I just wanted to make sure that it would be treated like other signs that would be extinguished at night and there wouldn't be any adverse.
That has the capability of being on a timer where I could shut it off at a certain time at night and turn it on at a certain time in the morning, by all means.
Those are my comments. Questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Flea.
I think that, as proposed with a non-changing black background with red lettering or maybe some other color lettering, depending on.
It'd be a black background with red lettering, no other colors.
That, I think this, in terms of presentation, I think it's an improvement over the current manually changed sign that you have. And the question is, is your current sign that you changed manually with the letters, is it backlit?
It is.
It is, okay.
Yes, and that stays on with the timer with the rest of the lights, but that could all be changed.
No further questions?
Thank you. Just a couple of comments and a few questions, I guess. I do agree with everybody who's brought up that this is sort of at our southernmost border, and it is the first time we've had this question in the B1 district. I particularly like the public message component to this. I remember the Bank of Westmont and LaSalle Bank when they had that, and I used to look at that often for items on events in town, and just everything from death notices to marriages and things like that that were put up there, and I was sort of disappointed when Bank of America came in and turned that off.
I agree.
Many of us were, and it would be nice to sort of see something like that come back. I think that adds, while some may view this as a detraction, I don't necessarily. I think this is sort of the way of the future. This is what we're going to see more of. I don't think we're trying to make this a Times Square type of situation. I think we're just trying to improve someone's business, and I think the public announcements is a nice part to that. I did have a question about the nighttime, so you have, you've answered that, so that can be extinguished at night or controlled by a timer, which is a good thing. Now, in looking at this, Shannon, are there five signs or six signs?
It's six total, I believe.
Okay, and?
I don't know, can you point them out to me so I know?
Well, you've got, you have the one on the north facade of the building, there's the one facing Cass Avenue.
Correct.
There are, is it two or three on the south wall of the building?
Are you counting the above the E V logo?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be two.
Okay, and then the ground sign. So that's five, there's a banner, a temporary banner.
I'm going to take that down. Because of the ice on the roof, I'm afraid to send someone up there, but that's going to come, that was always supposed to be up there for a week, so that is coming down.
Okay, so there's five signs, not six, and one of the signs is what, a logo above the door?
Correct. That was put in, you know, when we had the original building, I don't know if you remember the size of it, but we almost doubled it. So the existing signage was those three signs on the front, on the south and on the north end. That was existing. So alls I did was move the one, when we put the addition in on the south end, I moved that sign on the south side, so it could be exposed.
So you just moved it out to the new wall?
I just moved it out. Knowing that I had that much space and we had that much square footage, I did put that E V, just the logo above the door to make it look attractive, I guess. If you, I didn't know you would count it as a sign. It doesn't have a phone number or website on there, it just has a logo.
Yeah, unfortunately, the code just says any logos, words, description, they all are counted as total signage.
Yeah, you know, if you're heading, if you're heading, coming from the north, heading south, you don't see that north sign until you get right past that apartment or the little business right next door, the hair salon there. You don't see our sign on the north side until you pass that, and you have to really be looking for it to see it. So can I afford to take that down? Sure. The front sign facing east, right on Cass Avenue, I, you know.
How big is the sign, Mark, on the north side?
I want to say it is a six by eight. On the, oh, on the north side?
Mm-hmm.
On the north side, I believe is a four by six.
Right.
Because that's the one you're talking about taking down first.
Yeah, you can't really see it anyways, to be honest with you.
Well, with the new sign, the new improved if you were to.
I think it'll draw attention to it rather than there.
That's going to really catch everybody's eye, because by the time you'd see the other one, it's almost too late, so you're going to be seeing the other one.
Yeah, and the sign out facing Cass Avenue actually has their own logo on it, so either we're going to replace it or take it down eventually.
Okay. Well, I think that that's certainly a step in the right direction, and brings you much closer into compliance by removing that north one, which I would tend to agree with you, having driven that way, it's very difficult to see that sign. I think this, the new one, if you end up with the electronic sign, that's going to go ahead and do far more as far as catching the eye.
Sure.
Now, how often will the message change during the course of the day? Does it work?
Well, it all depends on what, I would commit to 20% to the village, so if we have a certain, we'll have five or six messages. I would imagine seven at the most with our specials, and then whatever the village has. So it would change probably nine to 12 times per cycle, which would be every 30 seconds it would change into something else, and just repeat itself, repeat itself, repeat itself. Can I get the weather on there? Yes. Can I put the time on there? Yes, I can, which I know I used to look at that with LaSalle all the time. So it's nice to have, it really is.
And it's 30 seconds?
It would be nice to have.
The code, that one, sorry? Okay, great, great. Just wanted to make sure that we weren't, I know they don't want to have it too fast that would cause.
Yeah, you know, I've seen some, I travel home south on Cass, and I've seen some past 63rd where I've actually pulled over because they were so bright. I'm not, it's going to be very cleanly done. You know, I want it to, I don't need to have the animation up there whatsoever, it's just going to be numeric and letters, that's it.
Great.
Probably no graphic, it'll be one color.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from commissioners or staff? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we appreciate the applicant's, if the Village Board subsequently approves this, his willingness to live within the requirements of the sign ordinance. I think the petitioner has already pointed out that we do have some other situations that are going to be receiving a letter and a visit from our code enforcement official because they have rather loud, distracting, pulsating animation or stroboscopic effect. That is not permitted under our code, and we've had conversation with a couple of those individuals, and they seem to come into compliance for a few weeks, and then all of a sudden it's back to this pulsating, stroboscopic animation. That isn't allowed, and we've actually had some complaints from, you know, I being a senior citizen now, myself and other seniors in the Westmont community who are somewhat distracted by that, thinking, oh, is there a police officer or a fire truck on my tail here because of this distracting sign? And unfortunately, this is one of those areas where the very thing that makes these effective advertising devices also makes them very distracting safety factors in a community. So we think that, you know, sign ordinance for digital signs, you know, tries to seek a compromise there, and if the Village Board does ultimately approve this, we appreciate this petitioner's willingness to live in some rather tight guidelines there to give him a good sign and yet not be a distraction or a detraction from the community.
You've got my word on that. I see it already, and I think it's tacky, and I don't think it'd be fair to the neighbors as well. With all the police going up and down and the fire department going up and down Cass, you don't need another distraction of bright lights flashing, in my opinion, so.
All righty. Any other comments?
All right. Well, we have a number of variances here, three, so we will have some findings of fact, and we'll start out with the first one.
For our first variance, to allow an electronic message board sign in the B1 limited business district. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The applicant's existing ground sign is outdated and no longer aesthetically pleasing. In addition, the lettering on the ground sign is changed manually at least three times per week to reflect current specials at significant cost to the applicant. The lettering on the existing ground sign is subject to frequent vandalism. The applicant faces a hardship in promoting its product and ever-changing specials to the local and regional public without taking advantage of existing technology in the form of electronic message board. The applicant cannot yield a reasonable return without this sign upgrade.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous.
Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. In addition to the above findings, this business is located on the edge of the B1 limited business district, and the applicant proposes that the new electronic message board sign would be more aesthetically pleasing to the surrounding neighborhood.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous.
Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Replacement of the existing ground sign with an electronic message board will constitute an aesthetic upgrade to this sign, will be limited in its application so as to minimize any adverse impact on surrounding properties, and will eliminate the vandalism of the existing ground sign which poses a detriment to surrounding properties.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous. I will entertain a motion for planning and zoning item 11-006A, a zoning code variance request to permit an electronic message board sign in the B1 limited business district.
So move.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Flea, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Any comments or discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Flea?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill.
Yes. We have a second request for variance and another finding of fact, please.
Request for a variance to allow an increase in the number of allowable signs. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. Given the applicant's building location on a corner lot with two street frontages, including a frontage along heavily trafficked Cass Avenue, and given the larger size of the applicant's building, additional signage is needed to promote the applicant's business. Due to the applicant's unique menu and catering options, the applicant could not yield a reasonable return on this property if this signage were not allowed without a variance.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement.
Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The village previously issued permits for several of the non-conforming signs, and the applicant simply wishes to continue with its existing signage in place.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous.
Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The total square area of the existing signage is not unreasonably large at 96 square feet. Allowing the existing signage to continue will not adversely impact surrounding properties, and there are no known complaints to the applicant or village concerning the existing signage.
Agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous. I will entertain a motion for planning and zoning item 11-006, item B, a zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Van Buren. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Flea?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Pill?
Yes. We have another variance, so we will have another finding of fact.
Request for a variance to increase the maximum gross square footage of signage. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. Given the applicant's building location on a corner lot with two street frontages, including a frontage along heavily trafficked Cass Avenue, and given the larger size of the applicant's building, additional signage is needed to promote the applicant's business. Due to the applicant's unique menu and catering options, the applicant could not yield a reasonable return on this property if this signage were not allowed with a variance.
Agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous.
Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The village previously issued permits for several of the non-conforming signs, and the applicant simply wishes to continue with existing signage in place.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are once again unanimous.
Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The total square area of the existing signage is not unreasonably large at 96 square feet. Allowing the existing signage to continue will not adversely impact surrounding properties, and there are no known complaints to the applicant or the village concerning the existing signage.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous. I will entertain a motion for item PZ11-006, item C, a zoning code variance request to increase the maximum gross square footage of signage.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Flea. Any comments or questions? Please take the roll.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Flea?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Link.
Thank you, Board and Staff.
You have a recommendation?
Thank you.
And Shannon will coordinate with you and let you know when you will be scheduled to go for your Thursday night meeting of the Village Board at the committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you.
That's the line.
Have a great night. Thank you.
Planning and zoning item 11-007, Lisa Neal of Doyle Signs Incorporated with Almas Khan of Cass Food, Gas Food Incorporated, regarding the property located at 6300 South Cass in Westmont for the following. A, a zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs, and B, a zoning code variance request to increase the maximum gross square footage of signage.
Good evening. Good evening. I am with Doyle Signs, but I am not Lisa Neal. Name is John Streets.
John, okay.
And I'm here for the BP station at Cass and 63rd. With me tonight is Almas Khan, the store manager for the site, in case anyone has any questions for him. At the core of this request, we're seeking to work within the boundaries of the existing signs at the site and simply retrofit one sign with a more cost-efficient lighting system. signs at the site and simply retrofit one sign with a more cost-efficient lighting system and face. We're not planning on adding any additional signs at the site and we're not planning on modifying any of the other signs at the site unless required to get your approval for the variance. Our, as the staff report mentions, our request does comply with the EMB provisions in your ordinance, as does the pylon sign in terms of size, height, and setback. Ultimately, the signs at the site do not fall under the requirements of your current code because of the quantity and overall area. However, each of these signs, I believe, are necessary to identify the business to both east-west traffic on sixty-third and also north-south traffic on Cass. In addition, a permit was pulled for these permits in two thousand and eight for everything except for those two pole-mounted, pole-mounted advertising signs that reference fifteen cents off gas if you get a car wash. I could go over the square footage of every sign and go into great detail about every sign in the site, but the staff report does a pretty good job of an overview of that and I don't want to bore anyone. If anyone does have any questions about any particular sign and why I believe that is necessary to the site, just let me know. Without proper identification, this site cannot yield a reasonable return and thus each sign is required. I believe each sign fits well within the architecture of the building and serves a purpose to identify the site and its services to the public. This location is unique in that it has three functions, each which require identification. It sells gas, it's a convenience store, it's a car wash. Each of the existing signs accommodate one portion of this business. In addition, I do want to make note that there is some trees both along sixty-third and Cass that limit the visibility of the site, which makes it that much more important to have the signs that we have now. And so those trees do block the pylon sign or portions of the building when the trees are in bloom. This variance will not alter the character of the site as it's been operating with these signs in its current quantity and area since two thousand and eight and probably before. To reduce the number of signs to two and to reduce the area to, I believe, eighty-eight point four square feet would harm the business. They wouldn't be able to properly communicate, sorry, communicate their identity to the public. One other note, the staff report mentions the two pole-mounted advertising signs should be removed as a condition for the approval. We are willing to remove those signs if you'll consider the variance, improving the variance. So, at this point, that's pretty much all I have to say. I'd like to answer any questions anyone has for this.
Thank you. Would anyone on staff like to make comment?
Well, first staff appreciates the desire and willingness to cooperate in terms of reducing the total number of square feet that you're using at the site. I just wanted to point out something that is unique about these older gas station buildings. They have very small frontages. So, I think this building is something like forty-four square feet. By code, they'd only be allowed about eighty-eight square feet of signage. They've got two hundred and thirty-three, so if they are willing to reduce the light pole or eliminate the light poles, they would bring that down by about forty-two square feet by eliminating those non-conforming signs. So, this, the reason that the variance is before you again is because they're seeking to use the new technology. The electronic message board components do meet the code requirements, but simply making a face change necessitated a review of what's on site.
Thank you, Shannon. Fred, any comments also? Do we have anyone in the, in the audience who would like to speak on this, either for or against? Close the public hearing and we will begin with Commissioner Fleet.
Well, I like the idea with the, with the new modern signs for, on the, on the corner with the electric, just, it's easier to see your prices and since the safe way down is, you know, you can almost sit there and figure out which way you want to go, where you want to spend your money. The, and driving through there today, there are some things you just have to have signage on, but I really felt that the, those two, the signs on the light poles are just sort of overkill with the, just almost aesthetically wise because you do, now your new light sign will say regular with car wash and it indicates on there how much you could save and as those two signs that say take off so much that are on the light poles, those are beyond the bounds anyway, aren't they?
Say that again, please?
The two signs that are on the light poles?
Mm-hmm.
That talk about how much discount in gas price you would get if you got a, or how much money you would save if you got a car wash on gas. Those are outside the bounds of what?
They were non-conforming, right? They, they were not included in the original permits.
So, I would agree that those, those should come down and I like the idea of the corner sign where that'll be.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fidesco?
I agree with staff that those two signs should be removed. I do have a question regarding the, the new electronic sign. Will, will it just advertise the price of the regular with and without wash or will you have like, you know, the regular and then, I'm just wondering how much of the sign can change? I know that the numbers can change, the amount, but is the other part going to change as well?
Once, once the sign's retrofitted with the LED modules and the new face, in order to change the graphics on the face, we'd have to change the whole face and I believe that would, that would require us to come before here again.
What are you gonna have up there as far as the two different sets of numbers?
Right.
What's, what's that sign gonna say? Is it still gonna say, you know, the price and then the other one with wash? Okay.
Yeah. A regular and regular with wash is what?
Regular and regular wash, okay. All right. That's what I was thinking, so. All right. I'm okay with that sign and I definitely agree with changing those other ones or removing those.
Excellent.
Commissioner Van Buren?
I answered my questions. I'm okay with it.
Commissioner Thomas?
No questions.
More of a, I certainly agree with everyone. I think there was a little overkill with the other ones. I think it becomes redundant once the new sign is put up. But I guess this question might be more for Shannon. So, with these older type gas stations, what you're saying is that the measurement is done on basically the C-store as opposed to the entire canopy?
It's done on the building. The facade of the building is cracked instead of the canopy.
Which, most of these are very small underneath a large canopy.
Right, right.
Which does create a problem then for this type of business. They're at a very high-profile location also with access from all four directions. So, I just wanted to sort of say that for the record that if you look at this hundred and forty-four square feet over, if we reduce the forty-two feet, we're gonna be roughly plus or minus a hundred feet over. But the, the hundred feet is over the eighty-eight square feet, which is a relatively small amount because it's based just on that small building underneath this large canopy. And so I certainly, with the modification you've offered, I certainly would support this also.
Excellent.
Any additional questions? All right. Busy night tonight, Fred, huh? We have two variances, so we will have our first finding of fact, please.
Request for a variance to increase the number of allowable signs. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The applicant's property currently contains twelve signs of various sizes consistent with other gas stations in the area and in order to comply with the branding requirements of BP gas stations. Given the various structures on the property ranging from canopies to light poles to its primary building and given the various advertising needs of a gasoline station or its products and services, the applicant cannot yield a reasonable return if it is required to remove the existing signage to comply with the zoning ordinance.
Agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous.
Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The existing signage which exceeds the requirements of the zoning ordinance is consistent with the signage of other gas stations in the area and has existed for years without complaints or problems.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous.
Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The property has contained these signs for years without issue. The property is located in the heavily-traffic South Cass Avenue business corridor and this existing signage does not alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous. I will entertain a motion for planning and zoning item eleven dash zero zero seven A, a zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes and Chairman Pill?
Yes. We have a second variance and a second finding of, reading of the findings of fact.
Request for a variance to increase the maximum gross square footage of signage. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The applicant's property currently contains twelve signs of various sizes consistent with other gas stations in the area and in order to comply with the branding requirements of BP gas stations. Given the various structures on the property ranging from canopies to light poles to its primary building and given the various advertising needs of a gasoline station for its products and services, the applicant cannot yield a reasonable return if it is required to remove this existing signage to comply with the zoning ordinance.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous.
Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The existing signage which exceeds the requirements of the zoning ordinance is consistent with the signage of other gas stations in the area and has existed for years without complaints or problems.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous.
Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The property has contained these signs for years without issue. The property is located in the heavily-traffic South Cass Avenue business corridor and this existing signage does not alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
Agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous. I will entertain a motion for planning and zoning eleven dash zero zero seven B, a zoning code variance request to increase the maximum gross square footage of signage.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Any comments or discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes. John, thank you for your presentation. Shannon will coordinate with you and let you know when you will appear before the village committee of the whole meeting on a Thursday night and you have our recommendation.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Planning and zoning item eleven dash zero zero eight, Jeff Ninguard of CJI Inc. with Bob Olaf of Auto Nation regarding the property located at four-twenty East Ogden Avenue, Westmont for the following. A, a zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs.
Good evening. I'm Tom McCabe, here representing Auto Nation and we're before you tonight again. Seems like I'm here all the time between Mercedes and Audi and BMW. Tonight, we're back up the old Baker Square property. We were up here last year for that. That's been refurbished, looks nice. We've got two signs up there right now. There's, there's a pylon sign on the front. There's a sign on the side that faces Westmont Drive and what we're looking for tonight is a third sign. And Mr. Kimball, I'll keep your throat, we'll only have one variance for this one. Well, if you look at the, the, the building as it faces Ogden Avenue, there's, we have no signage on the building per se. This is a BMW round logo. It's about two feet in diameter, so it's probably not even the size of this, this table we have here. Some of the things that we've done, it's almost, that side looks like it needed something. It's just a small medallion, basically. It's, it's lit up. And I think the, the key here is even with adding this sign, we're just a little over a third of the signage area that we're, that we're allowed. So, again, it's a very small sign. All the signs along there aren't yelling out BMW. If you drive by there at night, even the pylon sign is, is basically not lit, just the logo itself is lit. So, we're trying to do it very tastefully, very subtle and almost part of the architecture is, are the logos. So, and if approved, we would give our extra signage to our brothers at Mercedes.
Very good. Any comments by staff, please?
Mr. McCabe is correct. This is a very modest signage program. They've got a total of about forty-eight square feet and they're entitled to one hundred and twenty-eight square feet. So, as a corner lot by code, they're permitted two signs and the variance request is in order to have that third sign on the south facade.
I just had a question. Why didn't Mr. Olaf want to come up from Florida and join us this time here and enjoy our weather, Tom?
We get, it's hard to even drag him up in the good weather.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience or neighboring businesses who would either speak for or against? We'll close the public hearing and we'll begin with Commissioner Thomas.
I have no questions. My support is a hundred percent.
Commissioner Van Buren?
No questions.
Commissioner Fidesco?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Fleet?
No questions.
And I have none either, but I will ask our distinguished colleague, Mr. Kimball, for another reading of the findings of fact.
Request for a variance to increase the number of allowable signs. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The property is located on a corner lot with the building facing two separate streets. The applicant currently has a wall sign on its east building facade and seeks a second wall sign on the south building facade in order to comply with the BMW sign program and in order to maximize public exposure from this vantage point. Given this corner lot location and given the need to maximize its presence on heavily-traffic Ogden Avenue, the applicant cannot yield a reasonable return without this variance.
Agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous.
The plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. If this additional wall sign were permitted pursuant to a variance, the total square footage of all signage on the property would be forty-seven point nine square feet, whereas the zoning ordinance would permit up to one hundred and twenty-eight square feet of total signage.
Agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous.
Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Allowing this additional wall sign would not adversely impact the character of the neighborhood as the total signage is similar or less than what exists on other businesses in the immediate area and the total square footage of all signage is less than half what is permitted by the zoning ordinance.
Agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous. I will entertain a motion for planning and zoning item eleven dash zero zero eight A, a zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fidesco, seconded by Commissioner Fleet. Any comments or discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. McCabe. You have our recommendation and Shannon will coordinate with you so that you can make one more of her journey out into the cold with another presentation on the Thursday night committee, the whole meeting.
Thank you.
All righty. Planning and zoning item eleven dash zero zero nine. Ken Busek?
Yes.
I hope I'm doing that right, did I?
Not many people do.
Of Quantum Sign Solutions with the infamous Bob Olaf's again of Westmont M. Imports regarding the property located at two hundred East Ogden Avenue in Westmont for A, a zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs, B, a zoning code variance request to increase the maximum gross square footage of signage. Mr. Busek?
Well, basically what we're doing here is updating signage, refurbishing, refurbishing it. We are replacing two signs with basically, like, there's five refurbishments and two new signs, but the new signs are actually replacements for existing signs. The small ground sign, service parking and the dealer nameplate that says Mercedes-Benz of Westmont across the top is actually being brought in. Mercedes is changing that throughout the United States with a new type of sign. This sign, actually, the new sign is about three feet, I believe, shorter than the existing sign that's up there. sign that's up there. And they are eliminating, they're eliminating a star element logo which is above the front, the front entrance, which is no longer part of that project. So basically, it's just painting, relamping, rebalanced, new plastic. Nothing really changes per se, other than it's, you know, upgraded, new paint. And that's about it. I'll entertain any questions, yeah?
If you could perhaps just spend a moment or two and address the hardship that not having this variance would create for you.
Well, the existing, I mean, we're not really changing any signs per se. It's tough to say. I mean, basically, we're just refurbishing. I mean, this is existing signage that was in place previously. I was under the impression we're, before this board, only because we're changing the plastic and, and painting everything.
Okay. Staff comments?
Just to clarify, the variance is necessary because of the new signage. Whenever there's a permit issued, we do verify what's there and installed, whether or not it's in compliance. During the permit review, we did determine that there's about 529 square feet of signage. Well, actually, once, once the new signage is installed and the older ones are refurbished, there will be about 529 square feet total. That's over what code allows by about 189 square feet. This is a somewhat unique circumstance, because over time, the car dealership has assembled additional lots. They've constructed outbuildings such as the parking garage behind the main showroom. So, some signage has been installed on those ancillary buildings. Once consolidated, the code requirement becomes one lot or one sign per lot, and this is not a corner lot, which would entitle them to that secondary frontage sign. So, there may be some opportunity, again, for some negotiation in terms of total square footage to bring it a little bit closer in line. The main, I guess, issue in terms of nonconformity would be there are two ground signs where one is permitted, and the size of the larger ground sign, it's about 209 square feet. By comparison, the small ground sign, the more typical sized ground sign, is about 53 square feet. So, those are just the points that were mentioned in the staff report, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, by your reckoning, then, the parking garage does not count towards quantity or square footage?
It does count. Any emblem, logo?
Towards, towards what they could have.
The buildings? Do you mean the size of the building?
The allowable square footage?
Yeah. The, just the main showroom is what was calculated for the square footage of total signage for the, for the site. Yes.
So, because it's, they're sort of piggybacked the buildings, it, it obfuscates, then, really, the, the total count as well as the maximum allowable square footage.
Correct.
And that's a fairly good-sized building, if I remember correctly. It's a five-story building, I believe, right?
I have a question too. Now, he said he's refurbishing in, in combining and everything and setting the new ordinance, I mean, the ordinance against it, but the question is, have they increased the square footage of signing from what it is currently, other than refurbishing?
The two signs that are going up, I believe, are of the same size as the ones that were replaced.
The one is actually the dealer name plate that says Mercedes-Benz of Westmont is about, roughly, three feet shorter.
So, proportionally.
Which one is that? Is that, is that E1?
R3.
R3, okay.
If you set it on the podium, it'll show on the projector in a moment.
So, we're saying that signage is not being increased over what it is.
Correct. Right.
And we're actually reducing it. That star element logo over the front entrance is no longer a part of the program.
Is that one of the?
That'll be removed.
That one of the seven, then, is, is off this list? Or were there actually more?
I think there was eight total.
That is, okay. So you've gone from eight to seven, and one of the seven has been reduced in size?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Shannon, any other comments?
No.
These things sometimes happen when you consolidate several parcels of land into one assemblage.
Yep. Because this is, how many acres do you have now over there?
That I am not sure of. When I looked at the plan of surveys, it's tough to tell.
It's, this is a sizable piece of property, though.
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine. All right. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak either for or against this? If not, we'll close the public hearing, and we will start with Commissioner Fleet.
Well, I think the signage will help sort of bring everything together, having watched the process go on and, and all of its variations, and watching the five-story building go up, and then now the work, remodeling work that's going out front. I think the refitted signs and the new signs, I think, will do a nice job of pulling the whole property together. That's all I can say.
Commissioner Fidesco.
Yeah. If I'm not mistaken, at one point in time, this dealership was three separate parcels of land with a frontage on, what is that street to the north? That Plaza?
Yes.
Okay. Plaza Drive, which really, now, that, that, that's where the garage is. I mean, there was a frontage on the other street where it actually could have had signage. So what we've done, basically, is, is because that building is now really assembled with the parcel in front, it no longer has its own signage.
Yeah.
You know, or allowable signage. So in reality, I mean, you know, we're, we're dealing with something that's kind of a unique circumstance, and I feel that it's not overburdensome. You know, we are, in fact, going to see fewer signs, so don't really have an issue with it. Just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Buren?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem. This is one of these technical, they're here for a technical reason, but their signage is actually diminished, so I don't have a problem.
Commissioner Thomas?
So we're going from, from where we started to, to where we're going to end up, going from eight signs to seven signs, and one of the seven remaining signs will be shorter, and all of the signs will be better-looking and of better quality. I don't have a problem with that.
Are you sure?
Pretty sure. Unless you tell me something.
I'll refer to you on these. I also, I think the way that the property continues to shape up just gets to be more and more tasteful, and it, it looks better and better. And I think that, as Commissioner Van Buren said, I think that this is really a technical situation with all the lot combining that you've done, and I think, once this one is complete, I think you're going to be pretty well set. You're going to be leveled out now, and you've got the appropriate buildings and things, unless you continue to acquire more property, but I think it's going to be pretty well set now, and this should take you well into the future. Anyone else have questions or comments or anything?
Just a general comment, Mr. Chairman, that the, the new facade, once it's unveiled, after all the construction work is done, I think the community will find to be most impressive.
Been watching it. It looks, it looks good. They've got the wrap on it. I saw you got the glass in on the side buildings and stuff. That's, that's moved along pretty good.
It's getting there.
We have two variances, therefore, we will begin with a reading of the findings of fact.
Request for a variance to increase the number of allowable signs. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The property consists of several consolidated lots and buildings upon which five signs now exist. As part of the Mercedes-Benz sign standards, the applicant seeks to refurbish the five existing signs and add two additional signs to comply with corporate standards and maximize exposure. The applicant cannot yield a reasonable return, identify its various buildings and brands, and identify its various services to the public without this variance.
Please raise your hand if you agree with these findings. We are unanimous.
Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The excess number of signs is required due to the presence of a showroom building with service, as well as a separate parking garage building, all of which require proper identification and branding.
Please raise your hand if you agree with these findings. We are unanimous.
Criteria number three, the variation if granted will not alter the essential character of the locality. The property is located along heavily trafficked Ogden Avenue with significant signage in place for most businesses. The addition of these new signs in conjunction with the existing signs will not adversely impact the neighborhood or change the character of the area.
Please raise your hand if you agree with these findings. We are unanimous. All right. I will entertain a motion for planning and zoning item 11-009A, a zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Any comments on the motion? If not, roll call, please.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill.
Yes. We have a second variance, and I will request Mr. Kimball to read, please, another finding of fact.
Request for a variance to increase the allowable square footage of signage. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The property consists of several consolidated lots and buildings upon which the existing signage now exists. As part of the Mercedes-Benz sign standard, the applicant seeks to expand the corporate standards and maximize exposure. The applicant cannot yield a reasonable return, identify its various buildings and brands, and identify its various services to the public without this variance.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous.
Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The excess square footage of signage is required due to the presence of a showroom building with service, as well as separate parking garage building, all of which require proper identification and branding.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous.
Criteria number three, the variation if granted will not alter the essential character of the locality. The property is located along heavily trafficked Ogden Avenue with significant signage in place for most businesses. The additional square footage of signage will not adversely impact the neighborhood or change the character of the area.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are once again unanimous. I will once again entertain a motion for planning and zoning item 11-009B, a zoning code variance request to increase the maximum gross square footage of signage.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Fleet. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Pill.
Yes. Mr. Busick, you have our recommendation. Shannon will coordinate with you and let you know when you will appear on a Thursday night before the committee of the whole.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning item 11-010, the cultural center of TECO in Chicago with Mark W. Daniel of Daniel Law Office regarding the property located at 55 East 63rd Street in Westmont for the following. A, a map amendment request to rezone from OR1 Office Research District to C1 Commercial Business District. B, special use permit request to operate a general and professional office with accessory research. And C, a site and landscaping plan approval for an addition to serve the cultural center.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name's Mark Daniel, 136 West Valette Street in Elmhurst, Illinois. I'm proud to represent an entity in Westmont that has been here for some 20 years. Westmont has long been proud of its culture, its community fabric. You have a diverse community, and a strong part of that has been your Chinese and Taiwanese culture in Westmont. I had the pleasure noticing that that respect runs both ways. A couple weeks ago, when I went to a Chicago-area Taiwanese Chamber of Commerce meeting with a couple thousand people gathered near O'Hare Airport, and Westmont was raised, this, this project in particular was raised during the Chamber of Commerce celebration in advance of the Chinese New Year. Proudly, everyone stood up, applauded. They were happy to see that progress was being made on this. TECO is a foreign mission. The director of TECO is Forrest Chen, who's here. I'd like to have him say a few brief words before we jump into the technical side of the presentation, if we may.
Hi, everyone. I'm Forrest Chen. I'm the director of the Culture Center. Actually, Culture Center had been in Westmont for more than 21 years, since 1989, and now we have a chance, founded by our Taiwan government, we are going to purchase a new building and own a new, own a building instead, in place of leasing. And we also like to provide a service, not only to focus on to our Taiwanese-American community, but also we would like to provide a cultural and educational program outreach to the local community for those people who are interested in Chinese culture. We believe we can benefit of Westmont in many ways, including the educational and cultural and business. That's what I'm going to say, and I will let Mark continue.
Thank you. Tonight, we have with us Sean Chen, the architect, Joseph Abel, the land planner. They are both going to speak this evening. Louis Abuna from KLOA, the traffic consulting firm, has consulted a bit regarding access and parking, making sure that we understand occupancies. He's available for questions, if you have any on that issue. He's not going to speak. TECO's proud of this project. It's a relocation of the operations at 750 Pasquenelli Suite 212. They are basically trying to gain a permanent foothold. The changes in this property are to convert it from a financial credit processing company that's currently there, that's been there for a while. It's more of an office use into a culture center. The changes in the building Sean will highlight, but the occupancies of the building are designed in a way that Joe Abel will show you complies with your comprehensive plan and your planning for the southwest Westmont Business District, as well as the zoning ordinances. We're seeking some relief here that involves a technical issue. It's, it's a minor one. You've had a lot of sign discussions this evening, but I would ask that there be some clarity on temporary signs as part of the request. We've talked about this with staff previously, and the intent would be to have a condition on this special use, if it's granted, to allow for the temporary display of signs on private property, such as what you heard Mark Link mention previously, with a duration limit similar to those that would be posted on public property. It's one of those protections in the area where you have a duration limit for the public use of, I think it's up to seven days, or 30, is it 30? It's 30 days. Because of the number of events that are held here and the importance of letting the public know of those, so you can draw into the area and utilize this facility for the benefit of the property and the southwest Westmont Business District, it would help to have those signs there. So, in general, the occupancy of this building isn't going to change very much in the way of its planned intensity. The office building in full swing would utilize nearly all of the planned parking. This facility at its peak operations only will utilize all of the planned parking. There may be a special event here or there. Those would be under the village's special events ordinance. The planned project here involves occupancies that will generally be at the high end for the auditorium, 100 to 200 people. That's what they're expecting. It's planned to contain up to 400, with two or three high occupancy events that would take place each year that might approach 300 to 350 when things get going. Overall, looking at the lower end, in comparison to what we presented in the letter that we submitted with the application, if you were to ask, how many times will you have more than 100 people in that auditorium? It might be 15 to 20 times a year. Okay? So that's what you're looking at with the auditorium use. A lot of rehearsals for cultural displays, dances, and things like that, that they take to other parts of the county, COD, England Ellen, possibly Elmhurst College, and other locations. They may take place in the auditorium, but that is a low-intensity use. You'll have some health classes. You'll have some cultural relations, for example, with business associations, trade associations. It could be that you have associations of individuals for charitable purposes that will meet there. They'll use the facility. So, they also have a library, an audiovisual center, things that generally will continue from the Pasquenelli address to the address in 63rd Street. With that, I would note that Joe Abel is here. I'm not going to address the standards for zoning compliance. I'll let him do that. I know that you're familiar with the planning in the area. I know many of you understand that I've been around for a while, and you know the history of the OR1 Office District. This is an outlier parcel. We've reviewed the staff memorandum in some detail, and everything in there is accurately stated. I don't want to recite much. I don't want to recite much of that, given the time of the night here. And I think what we'll do is move on to Sean on the architectural presentation and the design of the building. He's got a PowerPoint that's been circulated to all of you previously, it should move along fairly quickly. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sean, Sean Chen of Divinity Design, I'm from Naperville. I'm very happy to have the chance to work on this project. Actually, I have been working with Steve Wasser for many, many years because I have a lot of, some smaller design projects built in Westmont. All right, let me just briefly introduce the ideas of the site design and the building design. Okay, talking about the site design, the ideas of site design, including some requirement funds the village. It is to bring up to a village requires stone sewage standard. We know this property was developed first in 1989, and at that time they have a much lower stone sewage requirement. So, we tried to bring that to the current standard. Second is to reduce disturbance to existing condition. We will try to modify as little area as possible to meet the village parking and landscape requirement. As you can see from the screen or on the second sheet of your brochure, really only those darkened areas are disturbed area. All of the area on the right of the building, if we look on the screen, those are all undisturbed area. You know, there might be a little crack on the concrete pavement that we had to cut and paste, but that would be, that would be about it. That is the ideas of the site, site design. Okay, currently, currently there are about 119 outdoor parking store. And because we are building the addition right next to the existing office building, by that we're reducing one rows of existing parking. So, and that is why we have to add a few parkings on the east and west of the property line. Right now, the total parking is 124, 124. The village requirement is 107. So, we meet the village requirement with a little bit of buffer. Fourth, I don't know if it is easy to read here. You can tell that we, in order to be neighborly and to reduce the disturbance to the neighbor, we plant a lot more tree on the south end of the property. In additions to that, we also add a continual shop on the south end of the parking lot. You know, just tries to do everything we could to reduce the disturbance noise, the vehicle headline to the neighbor during the night. And then next, I'm going to talk about a little bit of the aesthetic design idea. Those two elevation, one is for east elevation, the ones on the top is east elevation, the one on the bottom is west elevation. The main entrance to the building would be on the west. Now, we have a little bit slow roof architecture element, that is really the existing building entrance. The current height of that building is 29 feet, 29 feet, the tip, the very top. And so, what we're trying to do is to, first, not to exceed the highest point of existing building. So, our highest points of existing building to the parapet is 27 feet. So, that's two feet lower than the high point right now. And the ideas of the building design, we try to use the same brick and same limestone to match the existing. So, hopefully that would blend, blends in well into the existing structure. So, really, the general idea is to create a stately but very low-key of a building that would fit into the neighborhood and existing. For the building use, the existing building part, which we can see on the left-hand side of the whole building complex, that is the existing office area. And on the right-hand side of the whole building, it is the new auditorium area. And the existing office area, that would be used as general office use, some cultural event, maybe conference room. There will be some multimedia language learning center or... We also want to provide some cultural trips to local community as the director Chen just stated. So, those function will help, happens in that portion of the building for the auditorium area as the marks stated. And those, we are not really looking for any high-intensity activity happen here. You know, if anything, it would be some culture display, culture performance. We don't expect any high noise, you know, rock concert type of activities happen here. I guess that's the, the brief introduction of the building, and I'll be happy to answer any question after we finish the whole presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Abel, A-B-E-L. I'm a planning, zoning and economic development consultant. Been doing that for almost 50 years. Pretty familiar with the area. I was director of planning for DuPage County for 17 years and worked very closely with Mr. Kimball and other staff members here during the 17 years I was here because our program was really focused on working with the municipalities, probably more so than even worrying about unincorporated area because so much of the land was going into the incorporated areas. I was also fortunate about six years ago to work on the study for the southwest Mont Business District that finally got blended into your, your total comprehensive plan. And we did studies on that to determine the types of uses that would be appropriate for that district and what, what should be done to really get that going, realizing that it's a, it's a long-term process. But it was a good idea that the, that Westmont decided to take a real hard look at it and put in place the, the background for develop, redeveloping the area. And I'll get into that in terms of how what's being proposed actually, fortunately, fits into, what was being proposed fits into some of those recommendations that were made some years ago. I want to get into the, the zoning part of it first. You're all familiar, probably even more so than I ever would be, with the district itself. I took the heart of the district, which is intersection of Cass and 63rd Street, and just laid out the zoning in the surrounding area. And as you're, you're obviously aware, with the staff report, there, there is no doubt that there's just the one parcel, the subject parcel, that is on the OR1. It's a spot zone, if you want to call it that, it's just sitting there all by itself, goes back to the original use of this property by an insurance company. And as you know, at one time, it actually, the property continued all the way out to Ridge Road. The company sold off that land and actually developed the 1, 2, 6 lots that are directly to the east. When we met with staff, it was their recommendation that as part of the design for this area, that really this entire area should be a unified commercial, primarily C1. There's a small area of B2, sort of kitty corner from the subject property. But other than that, everything else in that corridor is on in the C1 classification. And so, it was determined that that would be the appropriate zoning classification. We could go through the Losal factors and all the things that have to do with zoning, but it's pretty obvious just from the implementation of your own comprehensive plan that the appropriate zoning classification for the subject property is C1. And unfortunately, the use that's being proposed is a special use within that zoning category. I prepared this exhibit also about three weeks ago. We did meet with the, we invited all of the surrounding property owners to the present location and presented to them, just on an informal basis, what we were doing. And obviously, the people that came out were, you know, directly to the east and the, the people in the surrounding area. And we did have some individual meetings with those people. And you'll see that even in our landscape plan, we reflect some recommendations that those individuals said they liked to see on the landscape plan. So, from a planning and zoning standpoint, it's my professional opinion that, that if staff is correct and your plan is correct, that the highest and best use and zoning for this property is for the C1 commercial designation. Getting back to the, the economic impact of this, there, there is no doubt in, in my mind that this kind of a use, which is, you're at, you're at the extreme end of that business district corridor, and this makes a perfect use in terms of a transition. Even though it be zone C1, it's the special use for the office. As we talked to the adjoining residents, it was obvious that their, like, the likelihood of this use being used for an office cultural use was of a much higher priority to them than any kind of retail. And because it's at the end of the corridor, this makes a perfect building block for this particular area. And it almost mirrors what you've got at the west end, where you have the athletic soccer fields that have just gone in in that new building. And then you have this cultural-type facility at the other end. And it's going to draw traffic back and forth and through the entire area. So, it really is a, a great use for the property, both in terms of enhancing the commercial and developing the commercial area, but really being a more appropriate transition between the rear lot line of the single-family to the east and then blending back into the heavier-type commercial that you find within a typical C1 district. When I went through the report, we had prepared at that time what we called a highest and best use matrix. And we evaluate all the kinds of uses that should be within the southwest, Westmont Business District, and then rated them even in terms of their location. Obviously, at the heart of the intersection, you would expect your real heavy retail-type uses. But then the other two uses that came out real high in, in our study were office and small conference center. And here, we are actually getting this right into one building. You've got the conference center that you're, you did the new auditorium with the conference center, all the other kinds of things that are related with this use, and then a small office component. So, it actually meets the test of the land use matrix that was prepared in that study that led to your ultimately designating this as an official redevelopment area. So, again, in, in my professional opinion, this represents the highest and best use that you could get in this particular area, both from the standpoint of zoning, implementing your comprehensive plan, and being a good use transition to the residential area directly to the, to the east. As I mentioned, we did meet with those individuals. And what I'll do is shift to the landscape plan that you can see up on the board there. Basically, the, the transition, especially as you, as you go to the south, you can see that we have the, we've maintained the detention area. I think in terms of the uses that have been there up until now, you had two different times of office uses. Fortunately, the plant material that is there has, has grown very well. And so, we're maintaining, most of the trees that you see in, on the, on the subject property have been there for, for quite some time. I think the advantage of the cultural center that's going in is they probably will have a much higher level of maintenance of that material. The people directly to the southeast said that they actually have taken on the responsibility of watering and weeding the properties through, through some of the office transition period that took place on this property. Now, you have a permanent user that's coming in, has a very high level of maintenance. They, they are part of the community, they've been here for a long time. And I think they're going to obviously take over that maintenance problem that the neighbors had in the past. And they wanted to continue it, but we've, we've indicated that we're definitely going to do it ourselves. What was asked for, and the only addition to the plan, is that in this particular, let's see, it's not, how do I get to show? Let's see. I want to point to the new plantings that, that we can just, if you just look at the detention area. It's the north line of the detention area. You'll see that there are new plantings, the owners particularly wanted because we already have evergreen plant material, trees. The detention area, because it's being upgraded, is going to have, have best management practices. So, it's going to have wetland plants in it and things of that nature, which are very attractive. But then as an additional buffer, we agreed to put in 23 dogwood bushes in that area. They're a particular type of dogwood that they wanted to see in there. They'll be planted originally at 36 inches, and they'll be maintained as a hedge of about four feet to five feet, which will add just an additional screening between the first parking spot. So, your, your first parking spot is actually 95 feet from the south property line. And that was the main thing that they asked to be done, and it is reflected on the plan and obviously will be part of, made part of the, the special use. So, again, from, from the landscaping standpoint, that, that whole area will be upgraded with additional plant material, additional wetland plants to, to meet the best management practices. The remaining material in the parking bays, you can see there are two islands that each contain eight, four trees. They are going to require some additional maintenance, and that's, again, one of the advantages here is that the cultural center will do pruning and all the things that should be done to trees on a regular basis to make sure that landscaping there is maintained and enhanced by, by good landscape practices. So, that is all I have in terms of the C1 being the appropriate zoning, that the office and cultural center with, with the auditorium meets the criteria of, of your plan and your zoning ordinance. And again, there are no variations that are being requested, and so this does represent one of the highest and best uses for the subject property. Thank you.
Just very briefly, the Economic Development Commission for Westmont saw the plans laid out before some of these modifications for neighbors were made. I, I think the support for the project was very strong from the commission. One other note on the special use side of things, Joe covered many of the facts that would support the special use findings. There was a special use memorandum, I believe, that we submitted with the application. And I would just note that there's nothing in the plans that would indicate that this use at this particular loc- use at this particular location would cause a problem for anybody in the area. Thank you. We have people here for questions if you'd like any answers.
Thank you. We'll wait just a moment for that. Steph?
Thank you. I had a list of comments to make, but as the presentation was made, you folks covered most of the points very adequately, so thank you for that. So I guess what I'll do is just point my, your attention to a couple of pieces of correspondence that were distributed prior to the meeting. The first is Planning Engineer Kim Nichols' preliminary engineering review remarks. And the second are the Economic Development Committee meeting minutes from the January 1st meeting that Mr. Daniels just summarized. I would also like to say that the cultural center has been a great resident of the Village of Westmont, and they've been patient in working with staff as we determined whether or not the C1 use here was appropriate, and in doing so, have been very forthcoming with their plans for the property and the various uses. This is certainly not a one-size-fits-all kind of category, so that's why you see the special use permit request before you this evening. For the primary use is the general office, on a day-to-day basis, there'll be two full-time employees there and five part-timers. But yes, once in a while, there are going to be these special events. So in addition to being the good citizens that they were, I also want to commend you for taking the opportunity to meet with the neighbors. I think that that definitely was a proactive step in taking the time to address their comments before bringing this forward is always helpful. Let's see here. I think that's really, the only question that came up during the presentation is something that I might turn back to John in terms of the temporary signage question. That is something that I'm not sure if we can address in the special use. Our code requirement is that it is one 50-square-foot sign up to 60 calendar days per year with a 30-day period between display times. So there may be some latitude in terms of changing that, but I'll leave it to John to comment.
Here's what I found. Special event banners or posters publicizing events conducted or sponsored by governmental, charitable, or not-for-profit organizations, which this is. That's installed over the public right-of-way. So this is a little different, but if it's affixed in, on, or over the public right-of-way, it can be displayed for no longer than 30 days prior to an event and seven days after the event, if approved by the Board of Trustees. So you're talking more about temporary banners or signs advertising a special event on the property, not necessarily on or over a public right-of-way?
That's correct. That's correct.
Shannon, the special use can impose special conditions and can't address any signage issues, and it's best practice, I believe, to get that upfront in the ordinance so everyone knows what is proposed, and the applicant doesn't have to keep coming back every time they have a special event.
That being said, that wasn't covered in the staff report, so does the group have an idea of what they're looking for at this point?
Well, I think the best example might be one of the larger events where you might have one of those 20-foot-long post-to-post signs that would be posted likely parallel to 63rd Street. Okay? And that sign would be announcing a particular event that's going to occur there. It'd be very similar to what you might have as a village sign promoting the same event someplace else in town. And then we want to have that obviously comply with the standards for those public signs. Those are the most proximate ones that I could find for that type of a sign.
I think, John, staff would be happy to continue to work with the petitioners up to the time of the committee of the whole meeting and see if we couldn't craft language that would accommodate their needs and yet give the village some control of the situation.
Okay.
This is so refreshing, by the way, compared to things that I've been involved in lately. It's almost like having a crown on the beach. You guys do a great job with efficiency here.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one other comment. I guess staff would like to state for the record that it's been obvious from the very beginning that the people associated with the cultural center project are people of great integrity. We have considered it an honor to work with them on this project.
Well, we can certainly see that from the presentation and from the plans we've been provided, so thank you to everyone. Anything further from staff?
Nothing further unless there are questions.
Is there anyone here in the audience?
I have, John. One staff comment that you may ask also, but I saw in the staff report, the special events could be as high as 400 people. You mentioned it may be more, 250, 300. There is a concern about overflow parking. The staff report mentioned you may try and secure parking at the nearby middle school, I believe, for overflow parking, or perhaps another commercial location. I believe that's something also that we'll have to address in the ordinance by way of special condition when the cultural center anticipates events over perhaps 300 people. We'd like some, I think assurances, the neighbors would probably want some assurances where the car's going to go. So maybe, Mark, we can work on that between hours.
Right. And very briefly, the design occupancy at 350 fits rather comfortably, and then for other events, they obviously plan to design with the parking. The conversations down that path with the school district are in progress, but we have a process to go through whenever we see that coming down the horizon. We certainly agree with that statement, however.
Okay. Yeah. Great. Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to speak either for or against this? Yes, sir. Please sign in and take the podium.
And then ask a question.
Comments are always welcome.
Well, I am Brandon Bowwell. I am the owner of Remus Auto Body, which is the nearest business to the west. I own business in the real estate. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it to the open house that you hosted two weeks ago, so I wanted to come here tonight and say, welcome to the neighborhood, look forward to having all of you as neighbors. I think it's going to be a great addition to the neighborhood, and I agree with Mr. Abel that it's a tremendous use for the area. The only one question that I do have for you, when you talk about these very limited, sizable events, would those typically occur during the week, during the day, or my assumption that they would be more weekend or evening-type activities?
The trend recently has been to have the larger events approximately, well, on average, one and a half times a month, two times a month. It fluctuates during, depending on the season. In December, there was one large event over 101, closer to 250 people. The largest of those events occurred on a Saturday during the afternoon hours and into the evening. There are also evening events that carry out at the property or will carry out at this property. The daytime events would range from afternoon rehearsals to morning meetings and conferences, possibly an association meeting over the lunch hour for a Taiwanese business or whatever you have in the way of not-for-profits that might want to use the location. So the hope is to draw business in there periodically as things expand, but the larger events would be normally outside of your peak hours at any given time. There could be a special event at the school. We'll have to pay attention to when they have their events, so we're going to keep an eye on that and planning our events as a courtesy during this forthcoming couple of years here.
Very good. And thank you for that response. That was my assumption that that would be the situation. And certainly, if that is the case, I have additional parking available for you. Welcome and good luck.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any additional comments from anyone in the audience before we close the public hearing? We'll close the public hearing, and we'll begin with Commissioner Thomas.
I also would like to voice my appreciation for the leadership of the cultural center for meeting with the neighbors, and that we have seen that when that has not happened and the rumors start to go, what's going in there, what's going to happen, and it just takes off and becomes, forms a life of its own, and it has to be reeled back in, and it's time-consuming. And it's, looks like it went well, and even the people, neighbors who weren't able to go there got positive feedback, too. So I appreciate the time and consideration for your neighbors there. I also agree that C1 is the right zoning for this, and I think it's a great, great location for this type of facility. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Buren.
Yes, I would reiterate Commissioner Thomas's comments. I would say welcome.
Commissioner Fidesco.
I have one question, as far as, since it is a cultural center. Do you have any plans on renting it out? Because I would hope that you're not going to do that. I would assume you're not going to do that. I would assume that it's going to be primarily for, you know, things that are sponsored, those larger events will be sponsored by the cultural center, not any outside entity.
Sorry, you just say, what kind of plan we are planning to do?
Well, I'm just assuming that you're not going to be leasing it to any outside organizations, your space, your auditorium space.
Sure, sure, sure. We are not allowed to do that, Joe. We just provide a place for the community to use.
Okay. So this is strictly for advancing cultural affairs?
Yes.
All right. I say it's a great concept and a great location.
Thank you.
Thanks for staying in town.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yeah, I would echo the words of my fellow commissioners and by the senior saying in Westmont, and I think this will be a nice improvement to that area and help revitalize or continue to revitalize our south end business district.
Great, thank you. I agree with my fellow commissioners. This is certainly a very, very good use, I think, of the property. I certainly concur with the rezoning to C1. That makes complete sense. It's a perfect transition into what we hope to become an even more viable business district over time. And with considerable planning, I think that this makes a very nice end cap to it, as you were good enough to point out to us. I loved the presentation, and the architectural plans were very well presented. Thank you very much for that. I would also recommend, if you haven't already done so, to consider a chamber membership in this, because it's a great way to become involved with the, with the community as a whole. So that's one of the things I would strongly recommend. Looks like a beautiful facility. The one question I have more so for our audience at home that's watching, so we have these garage bays, so I assume that's going to be demoed, and this is going to be basically sort of substituting into its place. And how much bigger then does the building get? It's probably not that much bigger, I'm guessing.
Okay. The existing garage is about 2,500 square foot, which is the area that we are going to demolish. The addition, which is the auditorium area, is 7,250. So the net increase is really less than 5,000 square foot.
Great. Okay.
And by the way, if I can amend a little bit, the FAR four-era ratio is 15%. It is really way less than the limit, which is the 80%.
And other than the, other than the temporary signage that staff is going to work with you on, is there permanent signage of any nature?
There is, and we're intending on using the existing sign. I did mention a sign package in the application, and I apologize for doing that. We want to simply re-letter and add our identity to the existing sign. The current owner's done a great job with the property and some of its design, and that's one aspect that we would want to maintain.
It is shown on the exhibit in the, in this corner right here.
That's it?
That's all there is, is the existing sign, and you'll see that it'll just identify the character of it, it'll be different flowering type throughout the season.
That's fine. Yeah, I think on some of our plans or some of the drawings you provided, that wasn't on there. But that's good that it's there. Great. I just wanted to, we obviously had a lot of sign issues tonight, so it was good to get that one right out of the way here. All right. Questions from anyone else on the commission or from staff? Great. All right, we've got a little business to take care of here, so we'll start with, I'll entertain a motion for planning and zoning item 11-010, A, a map amendment request to rezone from OR1 Office Research District to C1 Commercial Business District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas and seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Pell.
Yes. Item B is a special use permit, and for that will require a reading of the findings of fact.
We should point out, these are the new and improved findings of fact.
I'm sorry, I take that back. We will now have a reading of the new and improved findings of fact.
Request for a special use to operate a general and professional office with accessory research. Criteria number one, that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. All uses of the property will incur, will occur indoors. Applicant will utilize five full-time and two part-time employees. Handling administrative responsibilities and daily traffic to and from this site will be minimal. Adequate off-street parking facilities exist on the property. This use is not expected to generate any adverse noise, light, traffic, or other adverse impacts to the public health, safety, or general welfare.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous.
Criteria number two, that the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. The property has historically been used in office use and will continue to be put to this principal use after the applicant's purchase. The proposed addition to the existing building totals approximately 8,000 square feet and aesthetically will match the existing buildings. Adequate off-street parking spaces are being provided, and adequate screening is in place. Accordingly, this use will not substantially impair property values within the neighborhood.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous.
Criteria number three, that the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. This use will not generate any adverse stormwater runoff to neighboring properties, will not impact any existing wetlands, and will not otherwise hinder the orderly development of the surrounding property.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous.
Criteria number four, that adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. The property already has connection to all required utilities, contains sufficient ingress and egress to 63rd Street, and will be engineered so as not to cause adverse stormwater drainage to neighboring properties.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous.
Criteria number five, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. Sufficient off-street parking exists for this property for its daily uses. The property contains sufficient ingress egress onto 63rd Street. It is expected that daily traffic and deliveries will be minimal, and it is recommended that steps be taken to handle overflow parking for larger auditorium-type events.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous.
Criteria number six, that the special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, except if such regulations may in each instance be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The proposed uses and structure meet all of the bulk requirements of the zoning ordinance, and the addition will be constructed to conform to all building and other codes of the village.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. I will entertain a motion for approval, planning and zoning item 11-010, Item B, a special use permit request to operate a general and professional office with accessory research.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fidesco, seconded by Commissioner Van Buren. Any questions or comments on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Pell?
Yes. Finally, I will entertain a motion for planning and zoning item 11-010, Item C, a site and landscaping plan approval for an addition to serve the cultural center.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Van Buren. Thank you. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Thank you. You have our recommendation along with your entire group, Mr. Chen, et cetera. We'd like to thank you for coming tonight. It was an excellent presentation, very professional. Once again, I want to thank you for reaching out to the neighbors. Shannon will go ahead and coordinate with you a time at which you'll present before the village board on a Thursday night committee of the whole. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. I thought Mark.
Thank you.
I would like to entertain a motion to postpone planning and zoning item 11-011, items A through J, until the March 9th, 2011 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleet and a second by Commissioner Fidesco. Is there any discussion on this? I would like to add that there will be no newspaper publication or mailing of notices to surrounding property owners. Instead, the village will publish the agenda for March with this item included. Everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Great. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Pill?
Votes yes also. All right. Staff, do we have any additional things to discuss?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do have two other very significant and important items that we'd like to point out for the commission's benefit as well as our listeners at home. Tomorrow evening, which is February 10th, there will be a special meeting of the Westmont Village Board to hear presentations by three consulting firms with regard to the possibility of establishing a tax increment financing district in and around the area of our southwest Westmont Business District in the southern part of the Westmont community. These presentations will take place between 6:00 PM and 9:30 PM tomorrow evening, right here in Westmont Village Hall. The public is invited to attend. We hope that as many of the planning and zoning commissioners as possible can also attend that very important presentation. Likewise, a similar type of special meeting will be held on Wednesday, the 16th of February, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM here in the Westmont Village Hall, and that will be a series of presentations by three finalist consultant firms who will advise us on a rewrite of our comprehensive plan for the Westmont community. That will be a very important meeting, and based on the presentations and the questions and answers that go back and forth between the commission, the village board, and these consultants, the village board will be selecting the final consultant that will represent us in helping us rewrite our comprehensive plan, which will serve as a roadmap for our development, perhaps the next 10 to 15 years.
Great. So that's a village board function with planning and zoning invited to attend?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Great. Shannon, any comments or?
Nothing further from me this evening.
Commissioner Thomas?
I'm good.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. All righty. Hearing no further comments or anything, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Van Buren. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it.